You want one of them?
I need them to be out.
They should be.
Okay.
Well, I know.
How's it going?
Oh, great.
Good.
I don't know, I didn't hear four or five.
Yeah. Bruce is an interesting animal.
Mine? What's mine?
I'm getting a little...
I don't know, I'm sorry. I'm gonna ask him. I just tell him I wrote it. And say why, so that they ask for it. I wouldn't be able to talk about why.
Oh, good.
Deal, in my office, Joe Hayes?
Yeah.
I brought her here so many times before. We just got some of the puppies. Jess has got two puppies.
Oh, shit.
She's got two little ones.
She's got three ones?
They're Lab, German Shepherd, they're huge.
This is my puppy. He's now eight months. He was like that.
They're doing surgery on him this week.
He was a boy, he was a girl. I have three of those German Shepherd.
I can see him, I'll tell you, he has three large dogs, too.
Yeah. Been coming for a while.
Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting of May 12th, 2015. Roll call, please. Supervisor Kara?
Here.
Supervisor Elias?
Present.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Aladez?
Present.
Chair Robinson?
Here.
Let the record show, all members are present. Please rise for the invitation to be offered today by Pastor Bob Sawbell of Passion Church and the Pledge of Allegiance to follow, to be led by Supervisor Elias.
Well, it's good to be here with everyone today.
Did I bring them?
Yes, you did. Heavenly Father, we just thank you that we are here today, gathered in this great state of Arizona, in Pima County, and the city of Tucson. We just ask your blessing on the Pima County Board of Supervisor meeting today. We thank you for the wisdom, and discernment, and direction as they legislate and guide and lead in the affairs of our county. We just ask your blessing on each one and everyone present today, in Jesus' name.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe in the Stood of Pride of the United States of America and the two Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are with our God. Oh, there you are. You are here. And we're with our God. Okay, we'll let you introduce her now, or him.
Pause for pause. Good morning, everybody. This is Becky. Becky's about a year and a half old. She came to Pima Health Care as a stray. So we don't know a whole lot about her, but we think she's a mix of possibly Vessenge and definitely some Chihuahua. She doesn't seem to have had a lot of socialization, but her natural temperament is very outgoing. So with just a little bit of work, she can be probably a very outgoing and active little girl. She's a little timid in new surroundings, but she handles it all in stride when she warms up. You know, she's fine, so. But anyway, this is Becky, but I'd also like to announce that as of this month, our live release rate at PAK is eighty-four percent, which is awesome compared to the thousand twelve numbers of fifty-one percent. So all of our programs that you guys have wonderfully supported us on are bearing fruit. So thank you very much.
No, thank you for the information. So Becky, come on, look, who do you want to go home with?
Any takeers? She's only thirty dollars plus a fifteen dollar license fee, but also this weekend, we're supporting PetSmart charities, and they're having a national pet adoption weekend. So in order to help support their endeavors, we're having free adoptions this weekend for all dogs and kittens, cats over the age of three months. So dogs would have a license fee of fifteen dollars, though. So hopefully we'll see everybody out there, and maybe you'll find a forever friend or Becky, and take her on home.
Could be a constable dog, you know?
Yeah, looks like, I think so.
Just seems to me, in all fairness.
Yeah, you ought to, I think you ought to come up and meet Becky. Thank you, officer.
Thank you very much, guys.
All right, we are now moving on to item five on the, oh, there is one change to the agendas, pardon me. And that is, the Consent Calendar, page six, item three, Contract and Walk Facilities Management. Staff is requesting this item be removed from the agenda at this time. There are objections, will so be the agenda. All right. Moving on to Presentation, Proclamation, item five, Presentation of a Proclamation to Jim Nelson for Claiming the Second Full Week in May to be Women's Long Health Week. I'll move the item. Motion in a second, any objections? Carrying on, motion carries. Is Jim here? Jim? Is anyone here to accept the proclamation? Okay, we'll move on, maybe Jim will come in later. We'll move to call to the public. I want to remind everybody, you have three minutes, and please make sure your remarks abide by the rules of civility. Mary Murphy?
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Lord. I'm Mary Murphy, I'm here once again to advocate for Green Valley, for Green Valley. And some of what I've been kind of getting around to talking about, some of what I've been talking about with my family, my uncle, my father, and other guys in the golf clubs and the social circles, what, they talked about the things that are being talked about right now in Green Valley. They talked about the washes, they talked about the roads, they talked about the businesses, what are their company, how the economy is doing, and it goes back fifty years. So I have this, I have this treasure trove of historical information, and then I come in about twenty years, too young to be taken seriously in the town of Green Valley. But I grew up with this stuff. They talked about it, the guys talked about it, and I was listening. I would be talking to my father, because he was an engineer, a top-notch engineer. He turned me on to the engineering thing, that's where I got involved with it. He had experience with the Army Corps of Engineers, with the drainage thing, he knows washes. He knew all these things, and they're talking about the same things that they've been talking about for fifty years in some cases. When I-19 went in, the drains under I-19 were too small to begin with. It's a design flaw, an original engineering. And my family, I won't apologize, but I do take exception to the generation gap that I'm exposed to. And so I, and I also take exception to being told that our washes are in fine shape when they are not. Number six through number twenty-three are in trouble. And so the CMG Engineering Report was a fraud. I left this with you once before, is stopping the fraud spiral. It's from the school of business that I was involved in. It was better if things like fraud and adversity were exposed. It's better for the organization in the long run, it's better for everyone involved in it. If they take advantage of an opportunity, this kind of exposure gets, now you're sitting here, now you're flood control, okay? You're the Board of Flood Control now. And the generation gap, it kind of came around in here, I got my song lyrics, David Bowie's Changes, and the generation gap, the, I'm on the young side, to be even taken seriously in Green Valley. They'd rather use other tactics and means. The twenty, the past twenty years have not been good to Green Valley. We lost a grocery store. The roads are treacherous where Green Valley meets Sarita. The winter, it was horrible, the winter, the visitors. Every time I went out of the house, there were emergency vehicles. We lost a grocery store in the middle of all this. We have like a food item now, we had groceries where people could live without a car, and they'd like to have that option now. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Montgomery?
Good morning. Thank you for providing this forum. I'm almost overwhelmed. I represent, or I'm advocating for not closing the libraries, and if you are planning to close the libraries, to have some plan in place to replace the library serving said community. I live on the neighborhood east of Craycroft, north of Grant, I need to have the subdivision named, but I use the Duesenberg Library, I belong to a book club that we frequent that library. I realize that Craycroft and River is north, that is in the affluent neighborhood, the basis school utilizes that library, I'm there at three o'clock in the afternoon many times, and the rooms are filled with those students, if not other students. And, but the neighborhood just south of that, Glen area, I'm, I'm sure the, a lot of residents utilize that library, it's all in that surrounding area. So it's a mixture of affluent as well as middle America, lower-income people utilizing the library, and of course, certainly the computers are always filled, the students are there with the tutor going over lessons. With such a slow economic growth in this city, we need all the sources we can get to educate ourselves, to learn about resumes, to learn about job search, to, to have the resources that a library provides. So please consider these, these arguments, and continue to try to provide a library to the communities as we need them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Attaboni?
My name is Jerry Attaboni, and I live in Oro Valley. And Madam Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, good morning. I have the pleasure of, Marana in Oro Valley both gives something called the Explorer. So I'm going to give you the pleasure of listening to what this wonderful man, who is the mayor of Marana, had to say in the Explorer. When it comes to supporting the more than eight hundred millions in bond, the Pima County Board of Supervisor is taking voters in to approve in November, Mayor, Mayor, Marana Mayor Ed Honi said, "No, no, no," and hell, no. Honi has a strong opinion when it comes to projects being proposed by Pima County, because he feels there are trust issues. After Marana had been burned in the past, citing the last bond election where Marana was promised money for specific projects, Honi and the town never received it, and it ended costing two-point-one million in lost money from the county and lost grant funding. Honi said that funding was there to help mostly elderly residents in Honi Heights for sewer, water, and parkout crates. County Administrator Chuck Huckleberry wouldn't give us the time, or the money, and it cost the town. Honi said Chuck was mad over the wastewater litigation at the time. Huckleberry and the situation with Marana dates back to 2008, isn't as simple as trusting or promises. The county did exactly what promised in Marana, except for the sewers, he said. Marana wanted to own its own sewer system, and they got its own set of users, and became, it became illegal to move forward with the project. Pima County said Marana settled a dispute over which municipality would manage the wastewater system in Marana Town Limits. Marana eventually took over the services besides the trust factor. Honi said he's concerned about Pima County tax rates, and decides to go further into debt. You don't borrow money on your American Express card to make a house payment, he said. Borrowing money in the sixth horse community in the U.S. is just foolish. When you have to start borrowing for maintenance, you're in trouble. Look at Oro Valley and Marana, we have a road preservation plan in place, we have maintenance plans. If a bond passes, will we take it? Sure. Do we need it? No. Each year, both Marana and Oro Valley budget money for road repairs and preservation. Currently, Marana has budgeted more than Oro Valley has for more than one million in payment management and preservation proposed for the 2015-16 council year, which began July 1st. Oro Valley Councilman Bill Gardner, beyond the preservation funding, if residents look deeper into proposed budget, there's another one million for overhaul street maintenance and drainage, which covers material increases. When asked, what solution to problems other than bonds, Honi said, "Better management. Borrowing eight hundred million right now is foolish." Honi says, "Stop building bicycle lanes and start fixing roads." Gardner's concerned with, uh...
Thank you. Christopher Cole?
Good morning, all. Christopher Cole, First Vice Chair of Pima County Libertarian Party. I was not going to speak on anything on the agenda today, surprise, but there was an incident that happened on my way here. As I was walking down from the bus stop to where I was going to eat breakfast, I stopped with the light at Pennington and Stone. And I watched a Pima County Sheriff's Deputy jaywalk across Pennington, and then against the light, and then walk across Stone against the light. He wasn't chasing anybody, he just walked into the Legal Services Building. If the agents of Pima County do not respect the rule of law, why should anybody else? If the agents of Pima County don't obey the law, why should the people of Pima County believe you're going to obey the law and treat the bond money that you're going to give according to the promises you made? The rule of law is necessary. Pima County Board of Supervisors needs to make sure that everything they do is strictly in accordance with the rule of law. Last week, I suggested that you make it a rule that everything that you do have somewhere on there, in accordance with Arizona Tobias Statute, whatever, or in accordance with Article whatever of the Arizona State Constitution. We are taking this action. You really need to do something like that, and you really need to show the people of Pima County that you believe in and act according to the rule of law. And if you set the example, then your agents will follow. I read the Rule of Benedict on a daily basis, and today's section from Sister Joan Chillington talks about the abbot being a full and prime example of leading by example. The Pima County Board of Supervisors, the Pima County government needs to lead by example. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Hernandez?
Buenos dias. My name is Richard Hernandez, I'm a Pima County resident. This morning, I got up and I had a smile on my face, I was remembering McHale's Navy, maybe some of you remember that comedy? There's a point where Captain Binghamton gets in the boat with Tim Conway, and that little thingy turns over and he stands up, he's drenched, he's got his glasses on, and he says, "I could just scream." I'm not a very good actor, and I'm definitely not a member of the Board of Supervisors, so I'm not good at describing it, but I want to share with you a thought. Mother's Day, my cousin says to me, who works for Pima County, by the way, and he's a supervisor, says to me, says, "What you're doing with the Board of Supervisors, holding them responsible," he says, "Can you do that to the city council?" So I got splashed. Earlier that day, my neighbor, Mungias is last name, says, "I've been a supporter of Richard Elias for years and years," he says, "but my wife and I retired, thirty years in the armed services, I don't know what particularly, and also employed." And he said, "He's got his hand so far deep in mine, and I'll just put beep, beep, beep." And then he said to me, he says, "Can you do something about that?" I got splashed again, that was twice on Mother's Day. I went to Green Valley and participated at the invite of some of the ladies here at a meeting, there were twenty people in there. The things that were shared, and they're all in Ray Carroll's district, and everybody said to me, you know, they need a new Board of Supervisors, and the question was, "What can you do about it?" I got splashed again. And then I met with some ladies that did a Samhain in a library, maybe some of you know where that is, it's in South Tucson. And I was there because I was told it was going to be talking about the closure, and it turned out not to be. So I did come back, and I was talking to four librarians, and another young lady was sitting in the middle of the group. And as I was talking about closures and money, and what we could do to improve the library situation, I said to her, I said, "You're not a librarian, are you?" I could tell by her demeanor, the way she looked, the way she was fidgeting, and she said, "No, to be honest," and she said, "I work for Ramón Valdez, I'm on his staff." And what I shared then was that he needs to go because he doesn't support the community. And what I said, and I want to say it publicly because I said it at that meeting, was that I'd say that if he was sitting right here. I felt like I got splashed that day because I'm trying to help the librarians. There's so many other little things that I could add, and that's just been since the last time I was here at this meeting. These are things that I'm learning around Pima County. So I'm going to say to the county, and I'm going to follow your lead a little bit, anyway, there's so many problems at Pima County. I'm hearing it from your employees, I'm hearing it from my neighbors, I'm hearing it from my own family. Do you know that Raytheon got a billion-dollar grant for some new missiles? Do you know how much they pay in taxes in Sunday Side Schools? Zero. There are problems in Pima County. There really are problems. We need to address them. Thank you. Three minutes left.
Lou Sampson?
Hi, my name's Lou Sampson, I'm from Green Valley. I found it very interesting last week at the meeting when Supervisor Miller tried to question a contract about a nonprofit organization that has, has had its nonprofit status revoked by the IRS. And I remember when I first started coming to these meetings, it was back in December, Supervisor Miller was questioning another contract that was incomplete, it didn't have enough information, it didn't have the facts and figures, final money total. And Chuck Huckleberry at that time said, "We are going to change the process, and we will, we will improve that process." Well, obviously, things have not been improved, because when Supervisor Miller wanted to know who vetted that contract, it was slammed, the four of you wouldn't even ask questions about it, you just passed it. Now, that nonprofit organization is not a nonprofit organization, it gets free rent from a Pima County taxpayer-owned building. We not only don't get rent from that building, we end up paying the utilities, and the maintenance, and the rent. So, you know, that's not a good way to do business. If you're in the rental business, you're going to lose money every time. Also, another thing that she tried to bring up was an ordinance, a safety ordinance, about people soliciting funds and selling things from the median, which, you know what, in Green Valley, we have them now in our median, so thank you very much for not voting for that and sending them to Green Valley. And it was a safety issue with people standing in the median. In one month, the sheriff's office took ninety-three different calls. Now, that's a lot of money, that's a lot of paperwork, there's call-takers, there's dictators that have to write that, that take dictation, they have to write those reports. That's costing the county a lot of money to have people standing in the median. And you voted it down, you wouldn't even let her, you didn't even second it so that she, you could discuss it, you immediately voted it down. And I have to say thank you for doing that, because it really tells me where the four of you stand. You know, you keep saying it's about safety for the citizens of this county, you say you're concerned about money. Well, obviously, you have enough money to give free buildings away, and we pay the maintenance and utilities. It's not about safety, or you would have even considered, you would have talked about the safety of people in the median. So it's hard for me to believe that you really are concerned about the citizens and the businesses of this county. It seems like, I thought, when I first started coming here, whoops, I'm running out of time. So thank you very much.
Hank Peck?
My name's Hank Peck, I'm a resident of Pima County, I'm a native Tussonian, and I'm here representing SALC, Southern Arizona Leadership Council. And I guess I'll probably be some fresh air, I'm here to thank you. I want to thank you for the stand you've taken on the bond project, road improvements in particular. We at SALC see this as a, as an economic development issue. I certainly do, I drive, in Tucson, of course, I have, I do business up in Pings, I have occasion to go to Flagstaff, and as I was bouncing down Stone, coming to this meeting, I was reflecting, I was reflecting on the fact that those communities that I, that I've gone to, their roads are good, and it's one of the things certainly the businesses see when they come to Tucson, and they think about while they're here. So thank you for that. I would encourage the supervisors and the people in the audience to read the report by Arizona Town Hall. Recently, in April, we had an Arizona Town Hall meeting here, and it was on transportation. And the report is at the website, and I would encourage you to read it. You have limited resources, and they're becoming more limited all the time. So really, you know, a lot of what you have is leadership, you're recognized leaders in our community. And I'm grateful for you taking the leadership stand you would have taken. I would also like to comment, as a founding member of Southern Arizona Defense Alliance, on the strong stance that the Board of Supervisors has taken on flying missions from Davis Mountain, and I want to thank you for that. That's made a big difference, I've participated on trips to Washington, and that's been common in my, in the Pentagon and by the Air Force, so thank you for that. I'll leave my comment.
Thank you. And that, that report from Arizona Town Hall on transportation is an excellent report. Mr. Peck, and how, they just, it's at townhall.org, arizonatownhall.org?
Yeah, Arizona Town, I think it's aztownhall.org.
Aztownhall.
Aztownhall.org.
Yeah, that's an excellent report, thank you. Robert Bruce?
It's Robert Royce. Took me a walk up three years to pronounce my name correctly, so I won't hold that against you.
Say it again, so I'm, in case...
Royce, just like the British Automobile, but it's a German name.
Oh, I've got it now, okay, I've got it.
Not spelled the same, but it's a slang pronouncer. I haven't been here in two, three years, I apologize for that, I've been neglecting my duties, I've been had my hands full at city council chambers. I have been standing up for financial responsibility since I moved back here in 2001, and I have earned the contempt of the Tucson City Council, every one of them, for criticizing the giveaways and the way they have managed the city. And I'm going to be blunt with you, but it's not my intention to earn your contempt, dirty or hate. But my tax bill was a thousand dollars when I bought my house fourteen years ago. Now it's twenty-one hundred dollars, and only because it has the real estate slump. Part of the prob, hit part of the problem is you, I mean, it's Pima, it's Pima Community College, it's not very efficient, and TUSD is a second-rate school system, and they don't understand the process of financial responsibility. But I feel like the way our tax system here is structured, the citizens of Tucson are paying for half of the Pima County Sheriff's Office, and the only time I see a Pima County Sheriff's Deputy is when I'm coming down the mountain getting a ticket. getting a ticket. And I'm paying half. And the only way that Pima County residents can compensate for that is when they spend money in the city of Tucson and pay sales tax. But, that only reduces the subsidy, it doesn't eliminate it. So I do have a suggestion coming up. I don't have time now, I'm going to be back, promise. Now, I have a suggestion for adding equity to our tax system, which I have brought up three times with the Tucson City Council. But because it comes from me, and they'll always do exactly the opposite of what I tell them, they're not listening. So I will be back soon, hopefully, and I will lay out what I think we can do to make our tax system more equitable and take some of the weight off the Tucson city residents so we can focus still on building our own police force and our own city infrastructure and have less financial responsibility to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Thompson.
Hi. I'm Lori.
Lori.
I'm Chairman, Supervisors, Chris Thompson from District One, and I'm here to comment about the library closures. As one of the two thousand volunteers for the Tucson Festival of Books and one of the more than a hundred thousand people who attend the event, I'm urging you to reconsider the proposed closures of the four libraries and reduction of hours at Ada-Others. This all-volunteer event is now the fourth-largest book festival in the nation and is clearly a testament to the popularity and importance of books and literacy in Pima County. After gaining so much momentum during the past seven years and casting such a positive light on Tucson, we want to encourage literacy and sustain and provide convenient access to our existing libraries. To move in the opposite direction, dim this light rather than piggyback on its success and promote literacy sends a counterproductive message. Libraries are the centers of communities and neighborhoods. The Duesenberg River Library is across the street from, around the corner from, and the nearest library to three of the top high schools in Tucson basis, the Gregory School, also Castle Hill, and Catalina Foothills. It's used by students as well as teachers. It's also next to a childcare center and assisted living home, not to mention the thousands of residents it serves, including the founders of the book festival. Our youngest residents are introduced to the library during activities such as baby time, signing with baby, storytimes, et cetera. The library also provides meeting space and programs for residents interested in writing, art, and poetry, as well as a book club and other activities that allow neighbors to gather, learn, and build community. All of our Pima libraries are important, including the one in Morana. Knowing the decades of work involved in transforming Morana from a sleepy farm community into a town that has services that attract major corporations, it would be a disservice to close their library. Morana should be lauded and supported for its accomplishments, their library is essential to the town's continued growth. As a volunteer who campaigned successfully for passage of a bond last November, and for five months literally hearing it all, I'm very concerned that trying to save 1.5 million dollars for closing four libraries and reducing the hours at others will make it extremely pass, difficult to pass the 18.2 million dollar bond for the expansion of land acquisition and construction of five other libraries. The 1.5 million dollars in savings on paper, less the cost of building closures, job losses, et cetera, is not in the best interest of a community that cherishes our libraries and is striving to improve literacy. Let's prove to our citizens that we can sustain what we currently have in place, and let's honor the decades and decades, decades of service women like Katie Duesenberg and Nora McKernan have contributed to our state, county, and cities. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Muriel Morris.
I am Muriel Morris from District One, here to speak about the proposed closing of the Duesenberg Library. Duesenberg is used, there are fifty-five events this month alone, such as storytime, book clubs, homeowners association meetings, Spanish, English classes, Tai Chi, and so forth. The computers are always in use, invaluable for people who don't have access to one. The Wi-Fi is used and there is a computer specialist. Duesenberg has a great children's section, the kids have a sense of wonder, here they can physically explore the shelves, borrow and read books. Kids who use libraries are twice as likely to read well as kids who don't. The librarians work with programs for the kids, such as games, to-home math skills, chess, et cetera. Basis School across the street has no library, the students depend on Duesenberg for information, research, projects, and so forth. There's no bus pickup at Basis. Kids who need to wait, can easily walk to a safe, quiet place where they can concentrate on their homework. Librarians are trained to find the correct answer, they can cut through time wasted on Google, which is not the answer to everything, and where you can drown in data which can be inaccurate and irrelevant. The library has ordered out-of-state materials for me. District One pays thirty-three percent of the property taxes in all of Pima County. We should not be deprived of our local library. Closing Duesenberg will also mean more gas, more driving, which will not be welcome. Libraries improve neighborhoods and property values. People considering moving here will want to know about our resources. Closing libraries hurts Tucson's image. Libraries feed our souls and enrich our lives. Just watch the people reading, relaxing, recharging their batteries in the oasis that is a library. Libraries have been around for five thousand years, they're not just portals to the world's knowledge, they are a vital social human experience, the heart of our community. Duesenberg matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke McDonald.
Good morning, I'm Brooke McDonald, and I am representing Tucson Young Professionals as a board member, I'm also the co-founder of Lee Local. Thank you for putting the bond forward for a vote and giving young professionals like myself the opportunity to decide where to invest in our community. Tucson Young Professionals, TYP, is a group of young business and community leaders with the mission of attracting and retaining young professionals in Tucson. Over the past four years, TYP has built a young professional alliance and brought together eleven different groups of young professionals from across Tucson, including Raytheon, Tucson Electric Power, United Way, and Urban Land Institute. Collaborating across industries, our goal is to build a stronger voice for young professionals in Tucson and leverage the power of our young professional networks so we can contribute to our region's economic growth and development. I'm excited to share that our alliance initiative in 2015 is to host a community-wide Young Professional Summit on Innovation and Leadership. And this is taking place on October 22nd and 23rd of this year. We are collaborating alongside Startup Tucson and the Desert Angels as they host a week-long festival on tech and entrepreneurship. Following in the footsteps of cities like Denver, Austin, and Omaha, our goal is to put Tucson on the map as a hub for young professionals in innovation and leadership. Through initiatives like this, I would like to see more young people like myself in our community here in forums such as this, so that we are more aware and educated on items like the county bond election and for us to collaborate with local government around economic development plans. I graduated from the U V six years ago, and I began looking at job opportunities in other communities, in bigger metropolitan areas where I thought that there would be higher-paying jobs and affordable housing, maybe more entertainment. But, through an internship with Tucson Medical Center and as I became more engaged in the community, I realized that I could see myself living here for the long term. I also chose to start a business here two years ago because I saw a growing commitment to job creation, to supporting startups, to infrastructure, and the downtown revitalization. This all encouraged me to stay here and invest here in this community. So, thank you again for putting the propositions forward for a vote that will support economic growth and attract more young professionals like myself to this region. Thank you.
Thank you. David Cristiani.
Hi, my name's David Cristiani, I'm president and founder of the Genius Locai Foundation, which is a new, a not-for-profit by north of Catalina State Park in the Sutherland Valley. I'm not here to complain about things that have happened, nor to ask for handout. I think what's happened in that part of Pima County is really quite visionary and wonderful, with the Wildlife Bridge is going up over Catalina State Park, or not Catalina State Park, over Gorgo Road, connecting Catalina State Park and other open areas in the Tornino Mountains. I think it's fantastic, and I think it sets a great precedent in the area. What I am concerned about is what's going to happen next. I think that there's a parcel, I know there's a parcel of land owned by the state just to the north of the, of the, of the bridge. It's parcel number 222420100. I think what's done with that parcel could be a crown jewel of this area, not the state, maybe even the country. I think an interpretive center there would be perfect, it's already zoned for a school, as I'm sure you're aware. It could be open space, but I think this is one of those rare opportunities when the best thing for the wildlife, for open spaces, and the best thing for people in the area actually coincide. If that space is left just empty, there were almost a dozen buildings that have already been torn down. If that's just empty, I think, I'm afraid it could become weeds and nothing more. But if an interpretive center were there, I believe that it could be used for education, it could be something that people, I think, would travel from outside the country literally to go see. It could really be a jewel. Linked with this is the, I'm sure you're aware, there's a Catalina Regional Park along the Quinata de la Rola Wash. It's three miles, one hundred and ninety-seven acres. I know that there's been a myriad of issues that have come up about this parcel over the last ten years, and I know that there's some, some disagreement. I'm not politically savvy enough to know exactly what happened, but unfortunately, it's just sitting there. It's just sitting there, it's turning into an eyesore. I think, in line with what's going on with the bridge, if something were done with that other parcel that I mentioned just north of the bridge, that could become, my vision would be a nature, art, and education academy, or something like that. If there's already a White Dog Ranch with horse facilities, I think it would be minimal effort, and I would love to volunteer to do whatever I could to make that into something with artist studios, perhaps a sculpture garden, educational facility. I think there's a great opportunity here. So what you've already started in terms of the park, the bridge, open spaces, the bond issues coming up, I think you have a great start, I think you should build on it. Thank you very much.
That concludes call to the public. We have no executive session items at this time, so we'll move on to the regular agenda. Board of Supervisors sitting as other boards, the Flood Control District Board, item seven. What's the pleasure of the board?
Manager.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll go ahead and move Flood Control District Board, item number seven, it's a contract not to exceed $2,000, including closing costs.
There's motion in a second, any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We now move on to Board of Supervisors, sitting as the Board of Supervisors, moving on to item eight, the consent calendar. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I call to divide the question to separate items number one and eight for separate discussion and vote.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board of the remaining items on the consent calendar?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll move the remainder of consent as amended.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries, item one, Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, this contract for hosting Gay Loyola, he currently has two Pima County contracts, the second one is for HUD monies. This contract is for technical assistance and research related to finding monies for the federal colonialist programs. And these programs have been around for border states since 1991. And I have asked for the deliverables on these contracts since the day I was elected and this first came up on the agenda, I have received nothing. If this individual's doing any work, I am not aware of it, I have zero evidence to prove that he's done anything for Pima County. I would like to know what programs have been found as a result of Mr. Loyola's efforts, I would like to know what funding has been found as a result of Mr. Loyola's efforts. I've asked the county administrator on numerous occasions for this data, and without any explanation or data, I can only assume that the county administrator has no data and has no materials in there. Are deliverables required for these contracts? I therefore move to deny this contract amendment for $20,000.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. What's the pleasure of the board? Supervisor Carol.
I'm sure that there are some materials that could be produced.
No, they have not been produced.
Pardon me.
For two years.
Please, he has the floor, Supervisor Miller.
It's okay, I understand. But I do think that this requires maybe a delay so we can get Jose Gabriel Loyola's findings, his deliverables as, connections to grants and other funding that was found as stated in the report. I'd go ahead and support a motion to delay this until our first meeting in June to have these materials produced.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion, I'd love to see the materials.
There's a motion in a second. Any supervisor?
Mr. Atha's right here, maybe he can answer these questions.
Yes, please.
I've asked every meeting.
We would be happy to, I did not have a request from the Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, and others. I did not have a request specific to this amendment, but we have quite an extensive file of materials delivered, I'd be happy to send that to all of the board members.
Madam Chair, until we get that, I'd like to...
There's a motion on the floor. When you, Mr. Atha, you could, when could you have this material?
I could send it today.
Supervisor Carol, you wanted a delay till the first meeting in June, do you want to try for the next week instead?
I'm confident that I could have this by the next week looked at. If you haven't received a request from Supervisor Miller, that's understandable, I'm sorry that it came up today.
That is not true.
He has the floor, Supervisor Miller.
I'm not going to contradict Mr. Atha, I'm going to say, if you have the materials and you weren't requested those materials, I apologize for making this delay, but I do believe it's imperative to get the information in our hands, and thank you very much, Mr. Atha.
So Supervisor Carol, you want to amend your motion?
Till next week.
Till, which is the nineteenth? Does the secondor accept that?
Yes, I do.
Is there any discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, we will move this item then, continue this item until next week. Moving on to item eight, Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, this is a contract to purchase, for the wastewater department to purchase a 6,500 square foot building with a parking lot. And they're suggesting that they will pay for this with sewer revenue bonds. It is a warehouse, and I'm, it is going to be used for heavy equipment storage, enclosed storage, and CIP office space. So I assume there will be a requirement to do some improvements on this warehouse. We are, in another contract on this consent calendar, item four, we're leasing office space at 33 North Stone for $66 a square foot. When you calculate out this $6,500, it comes up to $155 a square foot that we would be paying for this building. We're talking about an increase in wastewater rates on the customers, we just received another memo yesterday which will dramatically increase rates for restaurants and other businesses identified as high-strength. When is enough enough? We need to stop spending money on unnecessary buildings and certainly more office space and storage. We have plenty of empty buildings and plenty of office space around Pima County. We need to utilize what we have and learn to live with, that people in this community continue to hear about year after year of high property tax increases and more debt, and it never ends. And again, the property taxes... And again, the property taxes will increase with this new building, over a million dollars coming online. There will be maintenance costs required. We're offering over a million for this building and land, which also includes half of the closing costs. If you look at the 2015 full cash value from the assessor's website, and I do recognize this is not the sales price, market value varies, however theoretically, this should come somewhere in around 80% of the sales value. And we're offering a million, and the full cash value on the assessor's site says 446,000. So either we're underestimating on the tax rolls, or we're overpaying for this property. Where is the appraisal for Mr. Coningsberg? That's what I would like to see, an actual appraisal for this property. Mr. Coningsberg?
Yes.
Oh, there you are, Neil. Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, we do have appraisal for the property. We're certainly happy to provide that anytime. We haven't been requested, it hasn't been requested to date, but we certainly could provide it. We do have appraisal for a million dollars for the property.
You didn't include that in the background material for the site, and I guess you didn't think it was relevant? Is that why? To me, this is something that should be included in the background material. To say that we didn't ask for it, whenever we ask for them, we seldom get them.
Well...
Thank you, Neil.
Okay.
So with that, Madam Chair, first of all, we're in dire straits here. We hear it every week from the county administrator that we're in financial trouble, where we aren't even sure what the pension increase is going to be this year, the, the rate that is set by the state. And we know that's coming down the pipe with the new gas fee rules. It's all over the place that we're going to be increased, and that's going to be higher. So with that being said, and with the taxes increasing every year on the Pima County residents, and with this bond and everything else that's going on, I move to deny this request to purchase land and building from Eagle River Land Holdings. This is unnecessary at this time. We have plenty of space, and I'd like to know, you know, where's this, these equipment and office space? Where are the people currently residing? Are we hiring new people? Are we purchasing more equipment?
Mr. Jenkins?
Chair Robinson, Supervisor Miller, I, I brought a picture, it's worth a thousand words, and we have some slides of our existing area that we service our conveyance department out of, and this adjacent property, we would be happy to show you. There's safety issues involved, and there's efficiency issue involves. If I may, it'd be very quick, it's a few slides.
I'd love to see.
I'm going to step up front, if I may.
Please.
Go ahead. Look at the video, or the slide.
Yeah, why don't we give you the mic? Oh, here, you can have the handhold.
Okay. I'm sorry, I don't have a pointer, but this is the current Conveyance Division yard. You can see in the upper right, that's the employee parking, and then as you come down the big building, that's a building that we've used for storage, but we found, we, we did a pilot program with Fleet Services. We actually have mechanics that come out to that building and service our heavy equipment in that building, and, and it's working very effectively. Instead of sending two employees with the service, the vehicle to be serviced, and another vehicle to bring them back, and waste a lot of windshield time driving over to Mission Road, we've, we've made room for them to work in that building. And to truly be fully efficient, we need two bays in that building, so they can have two pieces of equipment in there. And right now, many of our pumps for our pump stations and lots of other equipment are stored in that building. And go to the next slide, please. We have a completely full parking lot when all the vehicles are parked in that lot, and when they show up in the morning to go out for their, for their service calls and their work orders, next slide, please, we have a very congested area. Next slide, please. One more, please. Here's, you can see also, this building in the background is the same building where the maintenance work is performed on some of our equipment. To the right of that is a fueling station that some folks use, and that includes anyone in the county that comes in there. We have very limited space to get around. We have dumpsters, we have roll-offs, we have, it's not a very clear picture from here, but there's pipe racks. Next slide, please. Here's an aerial view, in green to the left is the yard I'm showing you, that has all of the issues we've had. By the way, we've had several near misses where employees are walking from their vehicles, or to or from a building, and cars are trying to, or vehicles, equipment is trying to turn around or move, and we've almost run over people. We've had numerous issues that have occurred. The property we're looking at, at purchasing is in yellow to the right. Next slide, please. One more, please. And it's that building in the, in the middle left of that picture, that bigger area is a warehouse for all of our pumps and other equipment could be stored, it's previously been used as a warehouse. And then that small area to the left, there's a few offices in there that allow us, our project managers that are mostly doing conveyance work, could come work out of that, instead of downtown, and get some right close to their customers and the people they're working with. And then all of that remaining kind of L shape, that upper left corner is not part of this property, but the L, it's a wall then, it's a masonry wall, it's protected, it's secured, plenty of room for us to put some of our mobile equipment, some of our storage of pipes and pumps and everything, and plenty of room to stage. And from the previous slide, it's just down the street, so it's a safety issue, it's an efficiency issue, and logistically, it was an ideal opportunity when this parcel came on the market. And as Mr. Croweberg said, there is a, a million dollar list, the appraised value, that the repair that needs to be done, the roof is the only item that needs to be replaced from facilities doing a, an evaluation of that property, and, and we think it'd be very helpful to the efficiency and save money in the long run for the department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Mr. Jenkins, you talked about the efficiency, you know, you're driving vehicles out. We built a multimillion dollar Fleet Services building that looks like something out of, Jim Click would be real happy to have. It's a huge facility. That was the purpose of building this facility, was to maintain vehicles. And right now, you're keeping your equipment across the way in your building you've got now. I believe this is unnecessary. You're raising the rates on the taxpayers already, and you're talking about efficiencies. We see how the efficiencies work in the wastewater department. The cost of main, operating and maintaining wastewater has increased dramatically, according to your testimony here before the board, when you're looking for a rate increase. And this is going to cause further pressure on operations and maintenance costs. You're already talking about putting a new roof on the building. Is there an estimate on the cost of that?
Supervisor Miller, that's a $50,000 estimate for that roof.
Okay. With that, and since we already have the facilities, the Fleet Services, I mean, what was the point of building that huge facility if we're not going to use that to repair and, and work on vehicles from waste management? And the amount of investment that we have in that building, and I'd love to show people a picture of that, I'll put it up on my page, it is sufficient to take care of all of the vehicles in Pima County, and maybe driving down the road on their way home from fixing or repairing something, they can stop off at Mission Road. What is the distance from Dodge Boulevard over to Mission Road? Not far. And I, I'm here to say that this is unnecessary.
Mr. Renault, did you want to respond to Supervisor Miller?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, the, the Fleet Services building really replaced the facility that was built in the 1960s, if you've seen it, and it's certainly there to maintain the 2,000 vehicle fleet that we have, mostly sheriff's vehicles. I think as, as Mr. Jenkins mentioned, at this location, we are talking about conveyance, equipment, very large equipment that really couldn't be handled anyplace else. So I think we, we really do feel that this is a justified acquisition. It's not a new concept. We've been searching for many years to acquire property to alleviate the congestion that was described to you in the photographs.
I just think that this is too much money that is being spent. We've spent hundreds of millions, over 700 million, improving the wastewater system, and I just think that we've already got a place to store those components. Sounds like we need another bay, but let's use the Fleet Services building we have now. Do we have to employ more mechanics over at wastewater? It just goes on and on. So with that, I move to deny this request to purchase the land and building from Eagle River Land Holdings LLC.
Supervisor Valdez, point of order.
I believe it's conflicted, emotional already.
It is.
Go ahead. Manager?
Supervisor Elias.
Neil, you know, let's talk some about that appraisal. Do you, do you have at least in your mind some of the figures and stuff behind it? Because I, I think that's, that's salient to this whole discussion here. Do you have that appraisal? You say basically a million dollars?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
Okay.
It's a million dollars.
Oh, what comps did you use, or what approach did you use in developing that appraisal, or whoever you contracted with to do that?
This was an outside appraisal. I'll have to pull up the, the appraisal, let me see.
What, Mr. Coningsberg, you, you have the expertise. What method do you think the appraiser employed in evaluating the property?
I'm sure that the, the appraiser looked at comps for the property.
That's what I'm getting at. So what are those comps? You know, we should have that information. You should have that available here. You can pull it up there on your computer, can't you? Or if that's impossible, please let me know.
No, I can pull up comps if you want me to pull up comps.
Yeah, please. I think it's relevant. And Tom, we're looking at how much per square foot on this deal?
The, okay, so the property is, equates to, the sales price that was originally asked was a million 55,000. That equated to $122 per square foot.
$122 per square foot. Okay.
And that's, it's, it's zoned industrial, is it not?
It's zoned CB1.
Oh, okay.
It's zoned CB1, and it has considerable improvements on it. And if I'm to understand Mr. Jenkins correctly, it also is going to serve for storage for other materials that wastewater deems necessary to have available to him, correct?
Is that correct, Mr. Jenkins?
That is correct.
Thank you.
It's on a major arterial, being Dodge Boulevard, and it's relatively close to Grant Road, correct?
I think 33.
33, 20, 32, 33, so it's probably on, just on the other side of the Rito, is that correct?
Right.
It sounds about right, doesn't it?
It is.
It's south of the Rito. Oh, it's south of the Rito? Okay, so that's right before you get to that, that older part of the community right there. I mean, it doesn't sound like it's a bad financial deal for us, and it sounds like that need is there for us to go ahead and, and have some facility, because it's probably another 15 miles to Mission Road, and then getting them down from Aina over there as well is another problem. So recognizing all of that, I'm going to go ahead and move this item. Even though I've had my concerns, and I share with Supervisor Miller regarding the rates issue, I think this is probably a reasonable investment, and at least we'll have an asset related to it if we choose to move on a different direction at some point. It's a relatively valuable visa property on a nice arterial, it's well-developed, seems like something that we probably need to have to make sure we can offer efficient service, and that, that's always been one of my concerns about, about wastewater, and I certainly know that's a concern in District 5, so I, I want to make sure that folks are getting reasonable service up there as well. So I'm going to go ahead and move the item.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Motion in a second. Objections?
I object.
Any further objections? Motion carries four to one. Moving back to the regular agenda. We move to Clerk of the Board, item nine, petition for refund, Vale Christian Church.
Madam Chair, this is, this is not handled by the Finance Department, this is through the Clerk of the Court. It's going to be Clerk of the Court.
Clerk of the Board, okay. I thought I saw a memo from you on this. It must have been about another one. I've got two, this is a petition for a tax refund, and we have two people who are in support of it. Does the board wish to hear from these individuals? It's not a hearing.
I do. I do, I think I have one.
Ben Pitney? And then Andrew Martin. I think these are the petitioners, is that correct?
That's right. My name is Ben Pitney, I'm the pastor of Vale Christian Church. Yeah, the, what's in, we're just asking for a tax refund. Obviously, we're a nonprofit, we don't pay property tax. We purchased a piece of property out on Valencia Road to build a facility, a $6.1 million facility. So this is just a 30-day difference. We've been refunded our property tax or exemption, filed for exemption on all other years prior to this. This one year, by 30 days, according to the tax code, we owe the entire year of property tax. So it wasn't our intention to invest in property to make money to sit on it. We already have structure on the property being built, so it just, it's a...
Excuse me, Pastor.
Yeah.
What, what use are you going to use that building for? You said you...
It's a church facility. It's, we're building a church in...
So you're going to use it actually for your sanctuary?
This is for the sanctuary for the church building we're building.
When you closed on this property, did it inform you that you were going to be liable for those taxes, considering the, the laws that ARS has regarding property taxes? Because, and I know you paid them.
We paid them.
And I, you paid them, and you're asking for them back. I understand that's the way the process works. But I'm just wondering, were you informed with that when, when you closed on this property?
When we closed on this property, I will confess, it's a pretty complicated scenario. So we're not experts in the tax code.
That's okay.
So the tax code, quite honestly, I think, took us by surprise, and it's pretty hard to navigate. So obviously, it's not what I do. We have plenty of, I have a much smarter person behind me here assisting.
He smiled when you said that.
Yeah, well, that's, that's wise here. Obviously, I depend on the right kind of people it is. So yeah, we're, we're not disputing the necessity of the tax. We are exempt from property tax. It, it just seems, it seems awfully unfortunate by 30 days. We could have, if known, we could have probably delayed the closing of, of our...
On the property by 30 days.
The whole thing, and avoided the whole thing if we were experts in the tax code.
Well, that's why I'm surprised, but I don't think you really need to be experts, because frankly, your title company should have informed you all of that.
You know, and, and I got to say, maybe they actually did, but it's, it's quite complicated.
Well, can I talk, will you talk to your expert here, what he has to say?
Morning, Madam Chair.
Your name for the background?
My, my name is Andrew Martin, and I am the treasurer of Vale Christian.
Thank you both for coming, by the way.
Appreciate it. As, as far as an expert in property tax, I am not. What, my role within the church, obviously, is much the same as what you do is oversight of the budget. And much like what you see with your budget, you're on a constraint for roads, you're on a constraint for Sheriff's Department, and all these things we've heard this morning, which you deal with on a daily basis. You're dealing with multimillion dollar projects, things you have to fund. We're dealing with $24,000 here. That may not seem like a lot to you with our project.
It's a lot, a lot of the laws.
Our understanding when we close on the piece of property is that if we were to be responsible for taxes, it would be from January 1st to January 31st of that year. Because we do have exemption, we have it on our personal property and our business equipment. Prior to that, 2014, we were granted complete exemption for both the real property and personal property, that if we did owe, it would be from January 1st to January 30th, 2013.
So for one month.
For one month. That was our assumption. There was also a miscommunication. We went back and double-checked all of our title work, and everything on our title work said 8,000 South Valencia Road, as far as our office address is concerned. When we went to go do some other title work for our actual construction loan, we realized that the assessor office had our address at 800 South. Now, that created a larger issue in that we didn't even know that we had a tax book in. Okay? Now, ignorance is no excuse, I understand that. We did go ahead, fess up, we paid the, the taxes, but we paid the legal fees as well.
Excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
You purchased this building, you closed on it, was it January 30th?
January 31st, and for correction, it was raw land at the time.
It was raw.
And there was no, there was no building, but we did have site plans in place. We'd been working with the architect for about 65 or 90 days prior to that, in designing the property.
So what happened here was you didn't close until January 31st?
Correct.
And the individuals that you purchased this from, you, in the closing... and the individuals that you purchased this from, you, in the closing process, you were not aware that the taxes would flow through for the rest of the year too?
That for the entire year, our assumption would be that the exemption would carry forward from point of ownership, and that did not.
They didn't tell you you could come here and ask us to let you off the hook?
That's why we're here today. So to be quite honest...
I bet that's what happened.
It took a lot of research on my part, digging through these roles, trying to figure out... Supervisor Carroll, you know what's going on out at Howton, Mary Ann, Cleveland. We are just off the side of that, you know? There's millions of dollars being invested in that area. We are simply an attachment to that. And by the time we're done with both phases, we're looking between thirteen and fifteen million dollars of construction. That's hiring jobs, that's paying local sales tax by the contractor. There's a whole lot of other benefits that are gonna come from having a church here outside of just the actual property taxes collected, which, by the way, in 2014, we did receive an exemption. You're not obligated to say.
Well, I'm sure everything you say is true, and I'm sorry it turned out that way. But... And I appreciate that this is going to be a sanctuary for people to worship. Everything you say about the economics that go along with building a facility is good for us all. So we understand that, and we always try to be good to churches because we're all people of faith ourselves, and we understand the importance of that. But, you know, we also know how it goes in the real estate game. Things go on with nonprofits, and certainly... Well, it's just troubling to see that your title company didn't take better care of you in light of the fact that you are a church, and that you are trying to do things that help the greater good.
And that's why we're here. Just because the title company or maybe our agent didn't take care of us, I would like to give you the opportunity to do so. The reverse.
Well, we're damn generous.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Elias, and all the other board members are finished with any questions or comments? Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Surprised to hear.
Thank you for being here, sir, and I appreciate you both coming down today. I'd like to go ahead and approve the petition for refund for Vale Christian Church for relief of their tax year 2013 taxes associated interest and penalties.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Moving on to item ten, Human Resources Classification Compensation. What's pleasure of the Board?
Well, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
You know, I have great concerns about this particular job and classification. I think there's ethical issues that interintegrate with the question. And certainly, Maricopa County operates under a similar kind of design, where their Office of Public Defense and Indigent Defense. And there's conflicts that come up inherent in defending the indigent. When there's multiple people involved in a crime, they need to be defended separately. There's an immediate conflict that's created in all of that, and that's why we kept those departments separate. I think all the other stuff that goes along in the memo that Chuck put out a couple of weeks ago about this is frankly very good, and it's all about efficiencies and saving us money. And I think we need to head in that direction. But in the conversation that District Five had with the Maricopa County Public Defender, their concern was that, once you create this kind of position, it's inherent and a problem that people can... The leader of that division then can start getting involved in cases in both offices, and then you've defeated the reason of having two separate offices to deal with a conflict of interest. It's working well in Maricopa County, is what they told us, because they have a public defender that's agreed to stay out of making those kinds of intrusions into people's defense. That said, it's nice to have ethical people in important positions. But we can't be guaranteed that that's always going to be the case in this kind of scenario. So I have deep concerns about it, although I do understand the need to create efficiencies and to change the way those offices have been functioning. So I just needed to make those comments because I really feel very uncomfortable with the whole deal.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I have discomfort with this as well. One of the reasons is that Mr. Huckleberry sent out a couple of different memos with conflicting information. And one of them, he said there were gonna be only three new positions. On another, he said four. He was gonna move the three over to this new department from the Public Defender's Office. However, after the hiring freeze, he hired two more employees into the Public Defender's Office. And as a matter of fact, fifty employees have been hired since the hiring freeze in total. So, and that amounts to one point nine million dollars since March sixteenth, between then and April twenty-seventh. So along with that, I'm concerned that we're creating another bureaucracy that isn't needed. I guess my question would be probably for Ms. Lesher is, how have we dealt with this for all these years to ensure there was...
Ms. Wheeler, I think Ms. Wheeler might have the appropriate individual.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller.
We can't hear you.
Now?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, I'm sorry, could you tell me exactly what you'd like me to answer?
We've had this organization in place, organized under the Public Defender's Office forever. And Maricopa did centralize and create this similar, to what we're doing now in 2007, to increase efficiencies. My concern is with the growing... With another department, another bureaucracy begins to grow. And if I look at Mr. Huckleberry's memos, he's talking about it being cost-neutral with the creation of, or moving positions out of the Public Defender's Office into this new department. However, as I said, since the hiring freeze of March sixteenth, between then and April twenty-seventh, we've added one point nine million dollars to the payroll, including two new positions. These three positions were supposed to move over to the new department. However, we created two new positions.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, we haven't created any positions yet. And this would be the first position. And so it's always been the same number of positions. There were... There are a total of eight positions in play, I would say. Seven of those would be transfers to the new department from the Public Defender's Office, and one would be a new position in the new department, which is the one before you today. Originally, we thought that two of those might be new in the new department, but instead, there'll be transfers, and the new ones are forecast to be in the Public Defender's Office, but they have not been created yet. And they will be relatively lower-paying positions compared to the ones that will move. So there will actually be a slight savings there. In addition, there will be three other positions eliminated at the Public Defender's Office, as well as one at OCAC. So overall, with the moves and the two potential new positions, a PD plus this one, it is a net savings in moving the positions around.
Well, according to Mr. Huckleberry's memo on April twenty-fourth, he's talking about the elimination of three vacant positions and it being cost-neutral. It's not, because he hired two more people into the Public Defender's Office after moving those people out. So we have conflicting information from his April twenty-fourth memo. And then again, on May first, there was another memo that conflicts... He's talking about four positions being eliminated on page two of the May first memo. So there's a lot of conflicting information out here, and we don't know what's going on right now. And if you add up the salaries for the post-transfer versus the current, that's a twenty-one-thousand-dollar increase just for the staff that are there right now. So it is not cost-neutral. But most concerned is the fact that we have conflicting memos with the, you know, one staying four, one staying three, and then we're hiring new employees after we implemented a hiring freeze in March. So I would like to move that we continue this to the May nineteenth meeting.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I would ask Supervisor Miller... She made a motion, I guess you need to...
And there, yeah, there was no second. Motion, I'd relax the second.
What two positions are we talking about, Ellen?
He's got... He shows an administrative services manager, legal administrator, et cetera, moving over there. And then the positions, he's got a public defender...
No, but which two did we hire in between April and today?
A public defender, Morgan Angling, a public defender, was hired on April twentieth. And Reyna Beatty hired on four-twenty-seven, another public defender. One is an attorney and one is a legal secretary. Those two positions were created in the Public Defender's Office after March sixteenth, actually, if they were April twentieth.
That very one may be true. I don't know. I don't know. Ms. Wheeler, do you know anything about that?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Elias, those positions do not have anything to do with this.
And they're cheaper than contract attorneys. I mean, I love you attorneys.
Correct. I believe those would be replacements for people who had left the Public Defender's Office, and it's unrelated to this situation.
Right, because that's part of the problem that we're addressing here, frankly, folks, is the fact that we have contract attorneys who make a bundle of money. And frankly, if we pay them by the year rather than by the hour, things tend to work out a little better for us. We have to be honest about that. And I think the savings that Mr. Huckleberry was alluding to is frankly a deal where we're betting on the common. If we create this department in a year, we're gonna start to save money on it. And that's a difficult one. But frankly, given the institutional knowledge that I have about ID and PD, it's a very expensive proposition. And it continues to be, and contract attorneys go up and down as a cost, because it's always a variable as to how many are gonna have to hire. Mostly up, but sometimes down, because it's a variable. We don't know how many cases are gonna come up that need to be treated and need to be dealt with.
Yeah, it depends on what the sheriff does and the various public safety officers do in other jurisdictions.
Right. And so, you know, I have my concerns about the ethics of running the department in the manner that's being proposed. But I think the money thing is nebulous. And frankly, it's a variable that we just try and control the best we can. That's why I think the plans that are currently being proposed to create this department, to move towards more electronic files, to get away from all the paper that we have, to move away from an older way of doing business and modernizing things, probably a good thing. All of that is probably a good thing that makes sense. But I think this board has to recognize again that we're betting on the common.
I agree.
Supervisor Valdez.
Madam Chair, we've heard from Supervisor Elias about a potential ethical issue. I think it's a very good point that I'd like to hear from counsel whether or not it exists, A. And B, how do we ensure going forward, if there is an issue, that it's brought to light and resolved?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Valdez, the way I understand this proposal is that this position is gonna have administrative oversight over the various offices, and that the various offices, PD, LD, and so forth, are gonna continue to operate independently in terms of their legal judgment, their ethical standards regarding their cases. And I think that's the understanding everybody has, and that's fine if that continues. In terms of going forward, obviously, if that breaks down and people don't honor their respective limits on their duties and so forth, then it's up to the lawyers that are involved. And there are good lawyers in every one of these entities, as well as the individual that's proposed to take this new position. They can certainly take recourse in terms of any kind of ethical issues that they see. So I think the arrangements, as it's set up, should work, assuming everybody fulfills the responsibilities as they should.
And let me... So we're basically looking at some case management issues, but we would also note for the record that this... Should this classification move forward, the individual is an exempt individual, and so that means if it's not working out, we have recourse.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I'd like to ask Mr. Weaver, how does it work right now? How are we avoiding the issues with the conflicts right now? Is it working? Have we had issues?
Well, I'm not involved in the management of the county, nor am I involved in any oversight of these organizations there. We wouldn't be allowed to do that because we're the county attorney's office. So we maintain a separate position from these other agencies, but...
Perhaps that's a question that are directed to Ms. Wheeler.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller, there is a system of checks and balances that's set up right now that would in fact continue with this new organizational structure. When new cases come into the system for defense, they initially would go to the public defender, and there's a conflict check to see if there's a conflict. And if there is, then it would go to the legal defender. And if they have a conflict, then it goes to the court-appointed counsel, which is, as Supervisor Elias has pointed out, gets very expensive very quickly. So that system would all remain in place. And this new position, the director of the department would have direct oversight over the contract counsel operation. Excuse me. But all of the other heads of the other four offices would still be solely responsible for managing the cases and client representation. There would not be any communication among those offices or with the department director.
No ex parte communication.
Or no communication about cases between this position as the head of the department and each defender, so to speak, public defender, legal defender, OCC. They would be solely responsible for managing the cases and client representation.
Okay, so this is going to... By creating this department is going to help us avoid using as much court-appointed counsel? Is that the case?
That is the hope and the purpose, that this person, by having a unified department, at the management level, there will be more flexibility in, say, determining that we are needing contract counsel for certain types of cases, and it would be more cost-efficient instead to hire an attorney at the Public Defender's Office, because then they could take those cases at a lower cost. Right now, they're all kind of siloed, and so there's not the flexibility to move to move positions around or to have...
Excuse me just a minute. Please turn off your cell phones now. Thank you.
So that's going to... Okay. I'd really like to have some, you know, just looking at a prior year's data and be able to understand what the projected savings would be had we had a department like this. That would have been nice to have that information. And as Chair Bronson said, we do have recourse if this isn't...
Yeah, it's an exempt position, so it's not subject to the merit system in ways that non-exempt are. Supervisor Valdez.
Madam Chair, I think I've heard enough. I'm fairly comfortable with the proposal, and I move approval, yeah.
Second.
Motion and a second. Supervisor Elias.
You know, a couple of things I did want to mention. My mom used to use this word all the time in Spanish. It's called "metiche", that sticking your nose in somebody else's business. And, you know, I hate making generalizations about lawyers. But I never met a good lawyer who wasn't a metiche on some level, you know? Because that's how you come up with a good product, partially, in doing your business as a lawyer, because you wanna know about everything. The urge to be a metiche in this position is gonna be almost sensational, I think. So with that, I am concerned, and I'm gonna vote against the motion. But I would also add that yesterday, I received a letter, and I'm sure all of you did as well, from our legal defender, Isabel Garcia, announcing her retirement after twenty-two years of service to Puma County. And I'd just like to thank her for her years of service and the high ethics that she always practiced in her office over there. And in particular, the fact that she always was insistent on making sure that her clients and the clients of her office received the highest level of legal defense that they deserve. And so I'd like to thank her for her years of service to Puma County and to all of us here.
Thank you, Supervisor Elias. We do have a question on the floor. Are there any objections?
I object.
Two? Did I hear two? Roll call.
Supervisor Carroll.
In favor of the savings, I vote yes.
Supervisor Elias. Supervisor Miller.
No.
Supervisor Valdez.
Aye.
Chair Bronson.
Aye. Motion carries, three to two. Moving on to real property, surplus property, item eleven. What's pleasure of the Board?
What's pleasure of the board? Motion and a second, any objections?
Madam Chair, some comments on this parcel. Here again, this land is going to be auctioned to the highest bidder and the owner of the self-storage facility adjacent to the property owned by Pima County, it's First and River Self-Storage, has requested the county sell the property to them, which would allow them to expand their business. There are two parcels. Again, theoretically, the full cash value comes up somewhere near 80% of market value. In this case, we have a parcel at, the complete parcel is 73,931 full cash value, the other one is 211,121 full cash value. Again, we did not get an appraisal. If we look at the last purchase that we made of the land for the building for the wastewater department, we were paying way over full cash value and now we're going to be way under because the starting bid is at $11,000. And it appears that this individual that owns this property is going to be the only bidder or most likely. I would like to see a copy of the appraisal on this one as well. Mr. Konigsburg was an appraisal done.
Chair Bronson, Supervisor Miller, we are required by law to get an appraisal on every sale of property, just as we get an appraisal on every purchase of property. So yes, as noted in the agenda item report specifically states, the appraised value is $10,000. And that was done by an outside appraiser pursuant to statute.
Thank you.
It would be nice to have these appraisals included in the background material so that we got to look at them. Again, my concern, where the assessor has the full cash value at 73,000 and 211,000 respectively for these two parcels, we pulled them up. And so that's a concern when we're getting an appraised value, outside appraised value at $10,000, the, there's something considerably wrong because in one case we look and they're really high and the other case we look and they're very low. I do have a copy of the assessor's page here if anyone would like to see it. Again, without this information, I move that we continue this item to May 19th so that we can-
There's already a motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor. I'll call the question. Any objections?
I object.
One objection, any further objections? Motion carries four to one. We now move on to hearings, franchises, license and permits, items 12, 13, 14. What's the pleasure, is there anyone, and these are hearings, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on these items at this time? If not, what's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
I'll go ahead and close public hearings on items 12, 13 and 14 and move to approve those items.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to development services, items 15 through 22. These are hearings and they're hearings on ordinances 2015-20, Resolution 2015-24, Resolution 2015-25, Resolution 2015-26, Resolution 2015-27, Resolution 2015-28, Resolution 2015-29 and, and, no, 21, 20, yeah, yeah, we're Resolution 2015-30. These are hearings, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on any of these items at this time?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Elias.
Seeing no one come forward, I'll go ahead and move items 15 through 22, including ordinance and ordinances numbered 2015-20 and 2015-24 through 2015-30.
Second.
And those will be resolutions following the ordinance, correct?
Yeah, there's, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry Supervisor, just voting. Thank you for the correction.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to addendum, addendum one, Board of Supervisors, item one, Constable Precinct one, there is, or there will be a vacancy in this position. In the past, the process that we have followed in filling vacancies is as follows. Vacancy to be advertised and posted on Pima website, Pima County website. Interested candidates are asked to file the following with the clerk of the board's office and I'm suggesting it be Friday, May 29, 2015 by 5:00 PM and they should file a letter of interest, a resume, a financial disclosure statement, which can be obtained in the clerk of the board's office or on the clerk's website or by calling the clerk's office at 724-8449. Qualifications for the position as defined by statute are as follows. Must be, applicants must be 18 years of age or over at the time of the appointment, a resident of the state of Arizona, a registered voter in Constable Precinct one and be of the same political party as the current constable, which is Republican. The clerk will validate the qualifications with the county recorder and then forward all the information to us and I'm suggesting that at the appointment, that we make the appointment at the Board of Supervisors meeting of June 16, 2015 and the appointee, the individual we appoint shall fill the position for the remainder of the term, which expires December 31st, 2016. Is there any-
Is that the form of motion?
Sure.
Second.
Let Supervisor Valdez.
My point was simply going to be you're asking for the May 22nd deadline considering we don't have a board meeting the following-
May 29th.
Okay, I'm sorry. Then that's fine.
Okay, there's motion and a second on the floor outlining the process. Any objections to that? All right then, motion carries, Supervisor Carroll.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to welcome anyone who's interested in being the applicant that they can call our offices, especially anytime during the next two weeks, I'd be happy to meet with any of the applicants that are interested in serving out the position for Mr. Lester. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Carroll. We have no further business and if there are no objections, this meeting, this regular meeting stands adjourned. We will reconvene for a budget hearing at 1:30 back in these chambers.